Call this meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Any changes to the agenda?
I'll motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Counselor Ross.
What?
Whoa! Whoa! Oh!
Counselor Meister. Question.
Move by Counselor Meister that the regular meeting minutes of May 12, 2025 be accepted as presented.
All in favor. Approved.
I said that wrong.
That was the agenda.
That was the agenda, sorry. That the agenda be accepted as presented, not minutes. Apologies. Getting ahead of myself, sorry.
Better call it again.
Move by Counselor Meister that the agenda be accepted as presented.
All in favor. Approved. Minutes from April 28, 2025. Questions, concerns? Counsel? Oh, May 12, 2025.
We're doing good, yeah.
Any questions, concerns? Counselor Ross is moving that.
The real Counselor Ross?
The real one. Question.
Move by Counselor Ross that the regular meeting minutes of May 12, 2025 be accepted as presented.
All in favor. Action items. Bylaw 5.8.1, non-residential tax incentive. Abe?
Counsel has been working on residential and non-residential tax incentive bylaws. Had those in place for a few years now, and the bylaws were up for review due to some legislative changes. And so bylaws 1802 and 1803 represent updated versions of those bylaws with some enhanced incentives for non-residential and residential development. First reading was passed on both bylaws at the last council meeting, and so bylaw 1802, non-residential tax incentive, is on the agenda for second and third readings tonight.
Questions? Motion?
Can do that.
Second reading. Counselor Kettles, question?
Move by Counselor Kettles to give bylaw number 1802, the non-residential tax incentive bylaw, second reading.
All in favor. Approved. Third reading.
I'll move third reading.
Counselor Carlson, question?
Move by Counselor Carlson to give bylaw number 1802, the non-residential tax incentive bylaw, third and final reading.
All in favor. 5.8.2. Abe?
So this is the residential tax incentive bylaw, and again, similar to 1802, is an update to the existing residential tax incentive bylaw with some enhanced incentives as per council's request. Second and third reading.
Questions? Discussion?
I'll motion for second reading.
Counselor Meister. Question?
Move by Counselor Meister to give bylaw number 1803, the residential tax incentive bylaw, second reading.
All in favor. Third reading. Counselor Ross. Question?
Move by Counselor Ross to give bylaw number 1803, the residential tax incentive bylaw, third and final reading.
All in favor. Approved. Moving on, 5. B. Delegation response Rocky Mountain Drift Club. Abe?
Last month, Jason Toon with the Rocky Mountain Drift Club came to council and requested to host their drift demonstration during fair days. They have done this for upwards of five, six, seven years now, to have their drift demonstration during fair days. They have requested to have it on August 9 from 7:30. Double check the time from 7 to 9:00 PM. And so there is some information on the event from last year council. Our engagement coordinator did follow up with some of the other coordinators of events that are happening at that time, specifically the ball tournament and the rodeo that happens kind of in that same area. Goal is not to have the events competing with each other, and that's actually how that worked out last time. The intention would be to have the event begin after, or coordinate rather, with the ball tournament organizers to have that drift demo take place either closely at the end of the ball games for the day or completely at the end. And so they don't have an issue with that. Reaching out to the rodeo people as well, the Wild West rodeo organizers. They also felt that the event wouldn't detract from the, sorry, the demonstration wouldn't detract from their rodeo, so they didn't have.
Would not detract?
Would not, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep. And was there any other questions from council about the event? We do have a map on here, same as last year, with the suggested road closures highlighted in red at Saskatchewan Crescent. If you recall, they wanted the closures just to the east of that north-south alley. That was the, that completes the loop for them to get back, so that's, that was perfect, perfect road closures for them. Questions? There were some concerns about resident feedback at the delegation. We did not hear a lot of, we didn't hear, I don't think we got any feedback after the event. We did get some pushback prior to the event. We do have a note in here if you would like some neighborhood circulation, if you, council decides they want this event to happen, and you would like some neighborhood circulation of the event because it is a noisy event, we can definitely do that, just include that in the motion. If you need more information or have questions, we can get some answers for you too.
Discussion? Questions?
I think most of our questions were answered last year after our meeting and then again this year, and I think if we do, if we do put this motion forward, I think the circulation of the neighborhood is a very important part of that, so we'll make the motion including Unless anybody else has questions.
Discussion? Questions?
Are we just notifying the residents that it's going on?
Pretty much, yeah. Letting them know that it'll be loud and noisy for a few hours in their neighborhood.
We'll have to notify some of the businesses as well that are affected. They, in theory, wouldn't have access to their properties for a couple hours if they're with inside that, those barricades.
Is that a motion, Counselor Meister?
It was, yeah.
Move by Counselor Meister to approve a road closure on Saskatchewan Crescent as presented for the Rocky Mountain Drift Club demonstration on Saturday, August 9 from 2025, from 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM, provided that event organizers include the town as an insured party on their invention insurance and that administration notifies the affected residents and businesses prior to the event.
Question? All in favor. From former Minister of Municipal Affairs. Abe?
Correspondents from Municipal Affairs regarding the 2025 local government fiscal framework This is as expected, so the capital allocation for 2025 is $752,075. The operating allocation is $72,800.
Questions?
The capital allocation in 2026 is expected to drop. They have provided some information, down to $737,96.
Take that for information. Other government correspondents. 5. D.1, Alberta municipalities.
So there's some correspondence here. There will be some engagement on the police funding model. So a bit of information from Alberta munis. The province has sourced out MMP to do some surveys and focus groups on the future of the police funding model that came into effect back in 2020, 2021, whereby the province began collecting requisitions from municipalities who were in the provincial police funding, under the provincial police funding agreement and were under $5,000. Province started collecting requisitions to pay for the policing in those communities, Claris Home obviously being one of them. There are some concerns, indications that those requisitions are going to increase soon with the new agreement that the province has agreed to with policing, with the RCMP, potentially up to 40% increases to some of those, some of those costs for policing in the community. And so what exactly that looks like for municipalities like Claris Home, we're not quite sure, but there is some engagement. They, and so this is just an advocacy piece from Alberta munis. They are looking to see what kind of effects the increased costs have had in the communities where there might be service enhancements, et cetera, and they'll be looking to engage the province to that effect. Actually, a lot of good information on the changes that we've, our towns, municipalities our size, a pretty significant change in the last five years. It's all detailed quite well in this, in this document by Alberta munis. And there is a website. There's a link somewhere for anybody that wants to know a bit more about it, they can, they can connect to that.
Okay, local correspondence. 5. E.1, Alberta Northwest Command, Royal Canadian Legion.
The Royal Canadian Legion does a yearly recognition book. The town has contributed to that for several years and purchased an advertisement just to recognize the contributions out of the Claris Home area to the war efforts, World War I and World War II, and to honor those veterans. And they are looking for the town to purchase an ad in the recognition book, again, I believe the same as last year, is that correct, Green? Yeah. So traditionally, the town purchased a quarter page, black and white spot, and that is 560, I believe, yeah. 533 plus GST.
Questions? Counselor Kettle?
I would move that we, no? I would move that we go ahead with the quarter page ad for approximately $560 with the Legion, please.
Question?
Move by Counselor Kettles to support the Military Service Recognition Book produced by the Royal Canadian Legion Campaign Office in the amount of $533.33 plus GST for 2026.
All in favor. Approved. 5. E.2, Claris Home Palliative Care Committee, 2025 Christmas Cruise. Abe?
So the Palliative Care Committee is requesting to use the Centennial Campground for their Christmas Cruise, drive-through light display. They've done that for four years, maybe, maybe more?
At least four.
Yeah, at least four. And so I think it's a pretty significant fundraiser for them. No concerns, reached out with the Director of Operations, infrastructure rather, and he didn't have any concerns, they're happy to assist them again this year. So traditionally, we get a motion from council to approve the Centennial Campground for that purpose.
Counselor Ross. Question?
Move by Counselor Ross to allow the Claris Home and area Palliative Care Committee to use Centennial Park Campground for a Christmas light display as a fundraiser, to allow them to use the town's power supply for their display, and to ensure that the roads are clear of snow for their event to be held in December 2025.
All in favor. 5. E.3, Claris Home Kraken Swim Club, request for in-kind donation.
Krakens, we're getting all the yearly's in right now, hey? There's, we see these, this request, I think, just about every year as well, maybe not during COVID or shortly after COVID, but the Kraken Swim Club holds a big meet every year, and they've filled out the application for donation here, council. The meet happens on 20, the 20th and 21st of June, and they're looking for council to waive the rental fees for the meet, which would be $825, and also provide some garbage cans and barriers and recycling bins to keep their event tidy and coordinated.
Questions? Motion?
I'll make that motion.
Counselor Carlson, question?
Move by Counselor Carlson to approve the Claris Home Kraken Swim Club request to waive the pool rental fees for the 2025 home meet on June 20th and 21st, 2025, and to approve the use of town barricades and extra recycling and garbage cans for the event.
All in favor. Request for decision 5. F.1, Peace Officer Program. Abe?
So council has directed administration to apply for a peace officer program. There are certain policies and processes that we have to have in place, that the town has to have in place in order to be approved, and so we have several of those policies on the agenda for council's review and approval. CPO, actually, one moment, please. Those policies are a, sorry. You know what? Just do it from here. Okay, a code of conduct policy, complaint process policy, incident capture system policy, reporting policy, and a communications policy. I can review those for you here. Just, I guess, stop me if you have any questions. CPO code of conduct, four main sections of this policy. I'll enhance that for you, Counselor Cutler. Small, right? No problem. Four main sections. First section, peace officer must not violate the Act of Parliament, legislature provisions of the peace officer's appointment, and town of Claris Home job descriptions and town of Claris Home authorizations, and then a section discussing proper conduct and manner in the community dealing with coworkers and within the, the actual town organization, and how to, essentially, people trick fairly and professionally, how to use their self-defense items, batons, pepper spray, et cetera. Conflict of interest section, and so just outlining the conflict of interest that they may find themselves in. For example, not using the peace officer position for the peace officer's own advantage or for another person's personal advantage, failing to take into account or make proper, make a prompt and true return of money or property that a peace officer receives in the capacity of peace officer, items like that. And proper conduct in relation to controlled drugs, controlled substances, and alcohol while on duty. They're also expected to do that by virtue of their town code of conduct as well, but there is a special policy here for the code of conduct, CPO code of conduct. Any questions on that? If not, we'll take a motion to approve that.
Quick, Counselor Kettle?
Couple of questions. I mean, so a whole lot of things shall not. I'm sure this is taken from other, you know, somewhat taken from other, but I'd rather see something that says, you got peace officer shall rather than shall not, but I understand it's a little tricky here, so I'll leave that just as a comment. My other question, though, is if in violation of these, is there a process that, and is that further down, and maybe I'm jumping the gun?
Yeah, there are processes, we've got disciplinary processes that we can deal with through our own existing processes. If it's severe enough, it would go right up to the soul gen and be dealt with at that point. So some of these are more serious than others, for example, controlled, controlled substances, if there's issues with that, they might, they might actually, that might take the measures out of our hands and put it into the soul gen's hands, right?
And all of the shalls are probably the jobs descriptions.
Fair enough. Any other discussion? Could I have a motion? Counselor Ross? Question?
Move by Counselor Ross to adopt policy number 5.3.03, the peace officer code of conduct policy as presented.
All in favor. Next.
5.3.16 is the CPO incident capture system, and this outlines the intent and purpose of the incident capture system, how it is supposed to be used, all the checks and balances that are in place for using it, why it's there, obviously peace officer safety, obviously to keep a level of honesty for the, for the peace officers, and also a level of investigative tool, potentially for, for staff or for law enforcement as well. So general procedures outlined here, council for use of the ICS system, when it's to be used, pretty much should always be used. There may be some situations when they're indicated here, when the CPO can turn it off, but basically all emergency responses, any violations in progress, any traffic stops, and any other situation or incident that the officer through training or experience believes should be audibly and visibly recorded. There is also a microphone that's connected to the, to the incident capture, the video camera, and so there's some information about that as well.
Questions?
I'll make the motion.
Counselor Meister, question?
Move by Counselor Meister to adopt policy number 5.3.16, the CPO incident capture system policy as presented.
All in favor. Did we miss 5.3.30?
Yeah.
It's just in a different order. I'll have this next one anyway.
Okay, so 5.3.30 is the CPO complaint process policy. Obviously, a very important policy, accountability, transparency piece, to have a method for accepting complaints and provides administration with processes for dealing with complaints, also for assessing complaints. If there are frivolous complaints and to be able to assess if it's a, if administration receives a complaint that is frivolous or if it is actually, has merit and should be reviewed. And so there are processes in place for us to deal with that. There are responsibilities for the town as an employer of a peace officer to, like, this, some of this, these processes are guided by legislation, so to follow up with, with complaints in writing within X amount of days, and to report, report any findings back to the complainant, and a process for indicating the ability to appeal a finding of, of an investigator into, into a complaint.
Questions? Could I have a motion? Counselor Kettles? Question?
Move by Counselor Kettles to adopt policy number 5.3.30, the CPO complaint process policy as presented.
All in favor. Policy 5.3.37, reporting policy as presented. Abe?
So these are all the administrative reporting requirements, as policy outlines, requirements that we have to report items or occurrences to the peace officer program, up to the Solicitor General in Edmonton. They oversee the town's appointment, and we have a responsibility to ensure that we are, the town and the peace officer are upholding that appointment. And so there are a number of items that have to be reported. There are timelines for reporting those items as well, so for example, employer suspension and termination of a peace officer appointment, that needs to be reported within 24 hours. Termination of peace officer appointment resulting from changes in employment status, those, that has to be reported within 10 days. We actually have to return the physical copy of the appointment that they, they will issue. We have to return that to them, and all, all items that are connected with their peace officer duties, think like crests and stuff like that. And of course, a number of other incidents. There's a number, number of things on here that we, we have to report to the Solicitor
Questions? Could I have a motion for policy 5.3.37? Counselor Carlson? Question?
Move by Counselor Carlson to adopt policy number 5.3.37, the reporting policy as presented.
All in favor? Approved. Policy 5.3.42, communication policy as presented.
So this is the communications policy, and it details the different types of communications devices and the dispatch communication devices the the peace officer will have at their as as tools to use. And discusses also their communications with the with the dispatch, which is the foothills regional emergency services commission, which is obviously a big safety tool for the peace officer program.
Questions? Concerns? Motion?
I'll make the motion.
Counselor Meister? Question?
Moved by Counselor Meister to adopt policy 5.3.42, the communications policy as presented.
All in favor? Approved. 5. F.2, appointment of assessor by name. Abe?
Yeah, Director of Corporate Services is here to discuss this request for decision.
Thanks, Abe. So this is more a housekeeping piece for council. So we currently have a agreement or a contract with Benchmark Assessments Consulting that ends July 31 of 2028. But as per the Municipal Government Act, a person must be appointed as the town's assessor on an annual basis. So we just have a resolution here to appoint Logan Wayleg. I hope I'm saying that correctly.
Wayloggy.
Wayloggy, thank you. As the town's assessor from Benchmark Assessments for the upcoming 2025 assessment year.
Questions? Concerns?
What question? Probably irrelevant at this point, but what if Logan decides to move to a different place? Do we just make a different motion later on in the year to replace him with somebody else?
Yeah, I imagine Benchmark would be in touch and they'd probably point someone to the area and then we'd have to come back with another motion.
Okay, perfect.
Counselor Ross? Question?
Moved by Counselor Ross to appoint the town's current assessor, Logan Wayloggy, as an employee of Benchmark Assessment Consultants, Inc., as the assessor for the Town of Clarstone for the 2025 assessment year.
All in favor? Approved.
Well, it took me four years to get his name right.
Okay, 5. F.3, coffee with council. Abe?
So we are looking for a motion or some direction from council on what they'd like to do for the coffee with council in September. We have them up until the end of August. Is that correct, Ray?
No, so talked about this with the mayor, and he has it up until the end of June and then taking summer break and then doing the two in September and one in October prior to the election. And then we can bring it back to council after that.
Perfect. Are you good with that? Questions? Concerns?
I agree with that.
Counselor Kettles? Question?
Moved by Counselor Kettles to continue the coffee with council initiative this September 2025 on the first Saturday of the month at 10:00 a.m. and the third Tuesday of the month at 7:00 p.m. at the town office until October 4, 2025, to be revisited after the municipal election on Monday, October 20, 2025.
All in favor? Approved. Okay, 5. F.4, volunteer firefighter tax credit. Abe?
Our Director of Corporate Services will review this item with council as well.
So as council recall, back in November, a policy was passed 5.1.25 regarding the volunteer fire ta- firefighter tax credit. This policy is a tax credit on the municipal portion only of the annual property taxes for the volunteer firefighters within the Clarstone department. The intent of the policy was to not only recognize time and commitment to the department, but also to aid in recruitment and retention of these firefighters. So below there is a chart based on the 2025 tax and assessment notices that were issued on May 14. And in accordance with the policy, a credit of up to $1,000 on the municipal portion only, as mentioned, not to exceed 75% of the municipal portion, is available to firefighters who are active and in good standing and have met, there's kind of a tiered eligible portion based on number of hours that they've participated on calls and training throughout the year. So any cancellation or refund of these taxes is, of course, at the discretion of council. It can only be done by council motion. I've listed, there's a dozen below that are eligible for this year. I've listed them by tax role, included their hours, the municipal tax portion, and then what the tax credit eligibility there is there. So for of $24,457 of municipal tax, $10,250 is eligible for credit. And this is, this was part of the budget process as well. We did draft into the fire department's budget this credit.
Questions? Concerns? Discussion?
No, I think it's a step in the right direction, recognizing our firefighters and their importance. I'm happy to make that motion.
Counselor Meister? Question?
Moved by Counselor Meister to apply a credit to the municipal portion of the 2025 taxes per policy number 5.1.25, volunteer firefighter tax credit as presented.
All in favor? Approved. 5. F.5, traffic safety plan. Abe?
So a traffic safety plan is also required for peace officer application, authorization to employ peace officers. We have had these in the past. However, it's been a few years, and so we have an updated traffic safety plan here for your review and approval. Part of the process is the safety plan is supposed to be endorsed by the local law enforcement, and we do have that endorsement from the RCMP sergeant included in the, on the agenda. Essentially, there are several, I think this is a fairly new thing since the last one, the traffic safety plans are supposed to be based on what's called the five Es. And so engineering, education, enforcement, engagement, and evaluation, those are all important parts of a traffic safety plan. And that is on page six of the safety plan. So the five Es are goals and objectives. The goals and objectives are organized around these five Es. Education, working with the public and our partners to help educate users of our roadways, pathways, and trails to do so safely. Town of Clarstone will continue to educate the general public on the safe use of motor vehicles and pedestrian safety with particular attention to youth and elderly drivers. Speed awareness signs will be important parts of that to to calm traffic and school traffic safety programs, so school visits, bike rodeos, et cetera. Enforcement, using conventional enforcement to encourage compliance with traffic laws. Traffic enforcement will be primarily focused on Highway 2 and in effort to slow down the general speed of vehicles within the community. Traffic enforcement will be focused on the transition zones, entering the community from multiple directions, and also focused on the downtown core and the school zones during peak traffic times. Engineering, the the purpose of engineering is to design safe roads and effective traffic control devices. Evaluation, working with our partners to identify traffic safety concerns and assess the efficacy of education enforcement and engineering solutions. And last one, engagement, working with the community to identify areas of concern and to engage the community in resolving traffic safety issues. The safety plan also identifies areas of concern. And so Highway 2 and 50th Ave West, the the intersection highlights that the intersections are the most concerning areas in a traffic plan. And so the intersection Highway 2 and 50 Ave West, Highway 2 and 520 or 43rd Ave, and then Highway 2 and Alberta Road at Tim Hortons are the the most concerning intersections or dangerous intersections in town. And so special attention will will be given there. Areas of minor risk, there's at least half a dozen or so intersections here that are highlighted on the safety plan as well. But generally speaking, the the goal of the traffic safety plan is to promote traffic safety for pedestrians and drivers and create safer pathways and roads in the community. There are also statistics that we will track every year, traffic safety statistics provided by the local RCMP or Alberta Transportation, just to give a snapshot of the the incidents that are happening in the community. So those will be updated, I believe, yearly as well.
Questions? Counselor Kettles?
I'm wondering, as a description, could we remove the reference to Tim Hortons?
Yes, we can.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Concerns? Can I get a motion? Counselor Ross? Question?
Moved by Counselor Ross to adopt the Town of Clarstone traffic safety plan as presented.
All in favor? Approved. Request for direction. 5. G.1, recreation needs assessment survey. Abe?
So our recreation manager is updating our recreation master plan. Usually council approves one of those. It usually is for four or five years. And so we're looking to update that. Prior to doing that, we are looking to engage the community. And so there is a survey here that the director is looking for some feedback on. We intend to do the survey all electronically. We have reached out to the MD as well to see if they, just kind of to recognize that we have intermunicipal agreements and that they do contribute to some of our recreation facilities and that we want to be a good neighbor. And part of the the intermunicipal agreements is to have collaboration and communications. And so getting a little bit of feedback from the the MD residents surrounding the town could be valuable input into the survey. So we'll be seeking some some input from MD residents as well, again, within the, within proximity of Clarstone. We did include a PDF. It doesn't render very well. None of the graphics come through, but if you were able to click on the link, it obviously presents a lot better. So was there any questions from council? Have you had a chance to review the the questions, recommendations, concerns?
Counselor Kettles? Those survey questions are the questions that we'll be using in the survey?
Yes.
Okay, I like those questions. As long as we're not asking about any facilities we want to shut down, I think I'm okay with it. Any other discussion? Could I have a motion, please?
We don't.
Don't need one?
Nope, just if you had, I guess if you had some some direction, we would maybe take a motion. If there's things you want included or changed, otherwise we'll proceed.
Okay. 5. H, financial report. Jen?
Thank you. So we have the financial report here ending April 30. Not a lot of new activities since March. A lot of it is just general operations for the most part. I did highlight a couple areas, again, for council as as in the past. So just on the statement of income, which is the, pardon me, of function, which is the first one. So the tax revenues, penalties levied remain the same, as we've only levied penalties once so far this year. We have received the franchise revenues to April, so they're included within this report, for a total of $162,225. And the first quarter school requisition payment comes out of this account as well because we collect taxes for it. So that's why you're seeing a bit of a discrepancy in what we've earned and what's what's showing there. On the next page, I highlighted it again, as it shows as a negative amount, and that is just because as of April 30, the taxes hadn't yet been levied. So when we have the March financial report, you'll see a different number there for sure. Economic development revenues, this appears to be a bit high, but this is the final allocation of the SILP grant funds. So the grant ran over a period of March 2023 to March 2025, and just the way that the distribution of the funds came in the final payment was slightly higher than budgeted. That's why you're seeing that. And this is offset, on item four, I noted that similar to the revenues, all additional spending within this category related to the SILP grant is funded from from those revenues we brought in, as well as a small portion of the wages. So a small portion percentage was allocated towards the grant for just the activities and different participation that's taking place. Financial audit has been completed on the SILP grant. I'm just waiting for the documentation. I spoke with them the other day, and we will be submitting that report by the end of this month. It's due on June 1, so that'll be happening. I also, on number three, which is the common and equipment pool expenses, I just highlighted that again as a reminder of the over $200,000 in insurance for equipment has been applied there. So that's an annual amount that just shows up early in the year instead of spread out throughout the whole year. Overall, though, if you're looking at the percentages, there's a few, if you have any questions on, that are outside of the norm for this time of year, but overall expenditures are are looking pretty good. On the next page, the the statement of income by object, as mentioned, I highlighted that negative 9% is just related to the first quarter school requisition, which will be funded once we, in May, as we've issued the tax notices. Under franchise and concession fees, I just broke it down from Adco M4, it's what we've received to date, just for information. And for other, it's a little bit high for this time of year, but it does include other revenues such as community event donations, miscellaneous revenues for items such as scrap metal, recycling that they've done so far this year. There's some FCSS funding that's come in there and fire service response fees, so that's what's showing up there. Number three on this page is just other, oh, sorry, I just spoke to that one, is other. Number four, under expenditures for contracted and general services. So again, the majority of these costs and why it's a little bit higher is some annual service agreements that have come due, just different renewals that come out at this time of year. And, you know, that number will start to even out as we get further down through the year. On five, the transfers to other organizations, I just wanted to comment that the second quarter payments for the community grant funds have been issued as of April 30, as well as some FCSS funding that they do annually has has been done as well. And then just below, under number six, I highlighted some external capital funding revenue that we've received to date primarily because we had some auction sale revenues, and there were some additional items that went to sale this year. So obviously, some additional revenues there. So these revenues will be, there's some for the old garbage truck, some garbage. So these revenues will be, there's some for the old garbage truck, some garbage bins and different pieces of equipment. So those will be put into the appropriate reserve transfer, which I'll bring forward to council, obviously, at the end of the year. And that's primarily it. I highlighted some of the costs that we've, capital costs that we've had to date. So a lot of it is community center renovation, which is complete. Bobcat excavator purchases complete. We've had some engineering costs related to some of the larger infrastructure projects, particularly water and sewer. So those are some costs there. Cemetery shed replacement is complete as well and the Centennial Park playground is ongoing. So that's kind of the status update. I don't know if there's any areas that I missed that council would like, need a highlighter of questions on?
Questions? Discussion?
No, everything looks really good. Thank you.
Can I have a motion to accept the financial report, please?
I'll make that motion.
Counselor Carlson? Question?
Moved by Counselor Carlson to accept the consolidated statement of operations for the month ended April 30th, 2025 as presented.
All in favor? Thank you, Jen. 5.9, CAO report. Abe?
Yeah, so this is a report from town operations, different departments throughout the last month. Just highlight a couple of things from my end to just update. Counselor calls, last year there was a motion to approve a supplementary pumping strategy. That was for basically NP, as our engineers who we're working with. They were going to create a plan for when water levels get low and below our intake. Our water shortage response plan references pumping into that intake. There's a lot involved with, once you get to that point, there's a lot involved with actually getting out and getting water into the intake. And so council and the MD council agreed to fund a study that would basically detail how it got to that point, what we would do, what kind of equipment we would use, what kind of approvals we would need, for example, going out into the reservoir and putting the pumps, et cetera. Where we would place them, what kind of pumps we would need. And so essentially, our contractor engineer was very busy last year dealing with other water issues with other municipalities. So we met with them and connected with them. They're still very aware that that needs to be done. And so we're still looking to get that done. Hopefully soon. Maybe have some updates for it at some point.
And they're happy to provide a discount?
Yeah. Don't recall that word.
You're dreaming, eh?
Yeah, I guess a little bit of conversation about the water level, the reservoir compared to last year. Of course, we're much higher this year at this time than we were last year, which is great. That's due to a lot of the conservation, I think that, well, due to a great rain spring, early summer last year primarily. A lot of the conservation and communication that they're doing with irrigators now. And so they've been able to retain a lot more water in the reservoir. And so when we, when we went through the winter, we were still above that initiation point of the water shortage response plan, levels of the water. And so we're in good shape there compared to last year. However, we will be reliant on good rains to kind of stay out of those restrictions. If we are to stay out of those restrictions, we will need obviously quite a bit more rain because once they start opening and diverting from that reservoir, it will not take long from the point we're at now to get to the point where we get the restrictions. And they have, the province has actually already been and currently are probably about half a cube a second diverting to augment the flows of the loo creek and to meet the irrigation demands downstream. So. I guess just a little water update for you. Any questions on any of the other reports here?
No other questions?
Disappointed that prices keep going up for everything unless we keep getting done, but nothing we can do about that.
Council committee report? Taken for information, council resolution status? Anything new there, Abe?
We've got one in progress, which is the peace officer program application, dealing with that, a little bit of that tonight, right?
Information items? Questions? Concerns? Could I have a motion to accept the information items? Counselor Ross? Question?
Moved by Counselor Ross to adopt the information items as presented.
All in favor? Approved. Motion to go in camera?
I'll motion to go in camera.
Counselor Carlson?
Twice tonight you call me the wrong name.
Question?
Moved by Counselor Carlson to go in camera at 7:56 p.m. for the following items. A, advice from officials, section 24.
All in favor? Camera off? Can I have a motion to come out of in camera? Counselor Ross? All in favor? Oh, question?
Moved by Counselor Ross to come out of in camera at 8:12 p.m.
All in favor? Motion to adjourn. Counselor Meister? Question?
Moved by Counselor Meister that the meeting adjourned at 8:13 p.m.
We are adjourned. Camera off, please.